Chip's on there too.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the City of West Liberty Regular City Council Meeting. It is January 19th, 2021. All councilors are present. Councilmember Dave Smith is on Zoom tonight. Also in attendance is City Treasurer Leo Gertz and City Manager or interim City Manager Elizabeth Hanson. We did have a public safety work session prior to tonight's council meeting. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, sir.
Here's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. Tonight, we have a public hearing and this is in reference to the capital improvement plan. May I have a motion to open?
Motion to open.
Motion and a second. Second is Councilmember Ramey. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramey. Councilmember Ramey. Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sackerys? And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
We are in the open public hearing. Have we had any correspondence? Anybody reference the capital improvement?
No, Mr. Ramey, not from the public. Not from the public, but Councilmember McFerrin have a question.
Okay. And so, we will go ahead and Councilmember McFerrin?
I just wanted to make mention upon looking closely at the CIP, I was reminded that on one of the bids, or on several of the bids, we also look at streets, redoing some streets. And we do have a historic resolution in place from a while back that does say that if we can maintain the integrity of our brick streets, we'd like to do that. Of course, that's dependent on cost. But I just didn't see that in there. I just wanted to make mention of that, that because we're characteristic of historic small town with brick streets, which is very unique, we also want to maintain that heritage and continue that. So that can be discussed later and I can talk to Leo about it within time comes up later.
And what Councilmember McFerrin's talking about is there's a formula that basically indicates that if it costs more than X amount, then we would replace the brick streets with concrete. But if it's within the amount that's allowed it, we would go ahead and maintain, keep the bricks.
Or a combination of the two.
Cost. Right.
We could do concrete gutters and then brick design or brick crossway.
Yeah, and I, you know, with your set of minutes, I think that, you know, everybody likes the brick streets. Well, not everybody. A lot of people like the brick streets. Is there any other concerns or questions, discussion for the council group? And I do want to ask for Zoom. Was there any public comments, anybody that's on Zoom reference the public hearing? Hearing none? Motion to close?
Motion.
Motion and a second. Is there any question? Hearing none? Councilmember Ramey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
We are closed. The public hearing is closed. And underneath that is our resolution, which is 20,021-0119-01. And this is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2122 capital improvement.
Motion.
It's motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's start with you, Councilmember Rock.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
Passes five zero. And we are on to the consent agenda. We have two items. Are the regular council meeting minutes for January 5th, 2020? Or should that be 21? And also the city clerk and treasurers report for November of 2020.
Motion, second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. The next item on our agenda tonight is the vendor vouchers claims list. And this is in the amount of $369,816.43. Motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion reference the vendor vouchers claims list? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. We were on to public comments and correspondence. There is none that are listed. So I will start out with Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom that has any correspondence for the council? Hearing none. Let's go ahead and start with councilors. Councilmember Ramey?
I had an inquiry about a driveway curb cut that I referred to City Hall. That's the only thing I did.
Thank you. Councilmember Rock? I'm sorry, exactly.
I got a moment.
Thank you. Councilmember McFerrin?
Only that I had another discussion with Mrs. Brownie in regards to the utility disconnect, but I believe that I just reiterated what our policy is currently. And that's, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Copy.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything, public correspondence, reference email, personal, or anything else?
Mr. Ramey, just referenced to Councilmember McFerrin. Again, I had communication with Mrs. Brownie in regards to the utility disconnection. And then we just had another, an email that we received from a resident with regards to snow plowing, but it appeared that we were able to resolve that situation as well. That's it.
And interim City Manager Hanson?
No, I don't know.
And I did have the other few comments that you guys have clarified, so I won't go over those. We are on to old business. And this is discussion and appropriate follow-up for admission and value statements. And what's really difficult, what I thought about this, and I know that Councilmember Ramey said she wanted to keep it kind of simple and clear. And I thought about it for a long time, about each and every one of those. Those are very important items. But also I didn't want to, you know, when I look at admission statement, I don't want it so long and convoluted that people kind of forgive, forget the core values of it. So that's kind of the reason why you picked five, six, seven and left it there. But I know that we'll go ahead and let interim City Manager Hanson talk about the question.
Well, you, let's see here. Diane had option three. And Mayor, you had circled option five. And it looks like Kara got first in and she had three and four.
And then I also included.
I think Robbie and Misters, that yours came in, right? At the end of?
Yeah.
Yep. And I had attached that to your email packets.
Yeah, I have a copy of yours. And but Robbie's, I think his came in, it was not in the council packet.
Yeah, I didn't have that one.
Correct. So do we want to send that to committee, to draft? Is there, which committee would?
Yeah, you could probably go through policy. They're meeting next month, the next Tuesday. We have like five things on the agenda for that meeting.
But it'd be kind of nice to have admission statement with some work for.
So have them bring it back for final, with the recommendation?
Yeah, can we do that?
Yeah.
That's under ordinance, right, committee?
Policy. Yep. That would be you and Councilmember Sackerys.
Is there any further discussion, thoughts, questions about the process? Okay, let's move on to new business. I did ask if anybody had any issues or wanted to go to any other committees. Nobody had responded to that. So I'm going to go ahead and leave the committees as is. Specifically in the context that there's so many moving parts right now that the city's doing in the organization and so forth, that I think it's very important that we keep the same members on the same boards to kind of finalize what they're working on. And I don't believe that needs any action. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. We're on to the equipment revolving plan. And this is Resolution 2021-119-02. And that's approving the fiscal year 2122 equipment revolving plan.
Motion to approve the presentation?
Motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramey?
Yes.
Councilmember Rock?
Yes.
That passes five zero. And we need to set a public hearing to approve the plans and specifications for City Hall renovation project. Is there a date that we have in mind?
Yeah, I thought we had it February.
Yeah, they're real quick. In the packet, under this item, it's actually an action form for both the renovation and kind of squished them together since they were related. So you do have the conceptual plan and the timeline for the construction project included there. The public hearing would be set for the February 2nd meeting, the next meeting.
Great. Is there a motion for setting public hearing?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, so the hearing is set. Five zero. We need to discuss and have any appropriate follow-up on the lease agreement with, we leave. And this is for the office space for the administrative staff during the City Hall renovation.
So do we just need a motion just to read the lease agreement?
You want to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? It's motion and a second. Discussion, reference the lease.
Because we have the contract, the lease deal.
Yeah, I mean, it's 30 days and we have to give them 30 day notice. And it seemed like a standard type of notice.
And our city attorney reviewed the lease agreement, made some changes. And it's, if I remember, it's executed.
Yep.
Right. And staff recommends going ahead and approving that? Yep, we have a motion and a second. We are discussion. And so, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. And we're on to discussion and appropriate follow-up with the water risk assessment engineering service agreement. And is there a motion?
A motion?
To per the service agreement? Motion and a second. Any follow-up discussions?
I did have a question that maybe Leo can help me out here. I know that under our budget impact statement, we have not reimbursement, not to exceed $19,008, $19,800 for the budget. But you have in your bid 22,500. I just was curious as to if that was including the $5,000 for emergency management? Or is this just a bid that we need to reconfigure?
No, no, now that I think about that, I reduced it down because Elizabeth and I talked about doing Zoom meetings versus in-person meetings. So I think I just used the wrong number. I think it should be that 19.
Eight, 19, eight?
19, eight number. Sorry about that.
Okay, so then we are going to get another estimate then for this, or? I mean, I just didn't know if you had to rewrite this again.
No, I think that, I think the contract's for 19, eight and I think that would be okay. It'll still be below that number. The other thing is, if we do have to do an emergency response plan, that would be on top of that number. But we'd like to come back to you on that because there's word around the state that all of the counties have emergency kind of emergency planning. And we're hoping that there's some kind of a, some kind of a bill or something that would give them some money to add emergent, add the water emergency action response plan to it. So we thought, we thought we'd hold off on trying to do anything with the emergency plan. And the way you're supposed to do this is do the risk and resiliency first and then come up with your emergency plan. So we'll have six months, we'll get this done by June 30th and then we'll come back to you.
There's not a, like a deadline for the emergency management, is there?
Six months after June 30th.
I mean, the resiliency, yes, but the emergency, your management, do we have to do that in six months as well?
Six months after this was done.
After this.
Number, we have to have that.
Okay, so a year from now, basically?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all I had questions about.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions, your discussion? I just thought it was weird, what, towns of 3,500 to 50,000 is where we're at? What's counted below 3,500? I mean, is there just different, different levels or?
Timelines.
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 Timeline and a little bit of detail on what they want to. When you get over the 50,000, there's a real detailed US EPA manual on how these have to be done. And when you get above 50,000, they want more detail, more analysis on certain things that you probably wouldn't have to do. And especially in the cyber arena.
Any further? Hearing none?
No, wait, I just have one question. In our long-term planning, do we have this kind of figured into our? Because you have to do it every five years. Is it something we need to build into our?
In his study, in the utility study?
Yeah. I mean, that's something you have to do every five years.
To me, this is kind of an, once we get this done, I think every five years it can be more of an operational. I don't think it's going to be a huge effort to update it every five years. My gut feel by what I see in things. Once we get this done, we can probably update it really inexpensively, like for a, you know.
Like maintenance item?
What was that?
Or like a maintenance type item?
More like a maintenance type item, exactly.
Okay.
My suspicion is Danny will probably be able to do it and won't even need us.
That would be good.
Hey.
No, nothing, Leo, we just have that much confidence in Danny.
I understand.
Okay. Anything credit?
That's all I got.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Passes five zero. We are on to reports. We'll start out with Leo, the city engineer.
Okay. First, I'll start off with our well number two project. They have completed all of their, almost all. They found out that their bacteria, their bacteria sample had waited too long. So they're going to come take another bacteria sample. But everything else looks good. We're not concerned with the bacteria, but we're going to make them do their, do another sample. The radium, everything fit right into what we thought. So our next steps with well number two is to meet with Northway again and say to them, okay, let's go back over your costs. Because they gave George Pearl some cost for what they thought should be done. And Northway also met with us, VNK and the city and the DNR. The DNR wanted this work done now. But I'd like to meet with Northway first and then have another meeting with the city in the, in the DNR and then move forward with, really at that point, we're kind of complete with the study. And then the next steps are, do we want to go forward and really make this a production well? And what is your cost to make that a production well? We don't have that dialed in yet. But this, this part of the study, having Northway do the sampling, basically means everything's looking really good. It's not looking as bad as we, some people, I didn't think it would look bad, but the DNR was nervous. And now we will be recasing the pipe or cleaning the pipe again, not recasing the rock pipe. So they talked about putting new pump, putting new electrical in there. And then we'll probably have to build some kind of a, some kind of a facility around it to meet the DNR's needs and that, and then tie it into our SCADA system. So that's all, all to come soon. The next thing is still working on the stormwater utility and the water and sewer rate, rate study. Stormwater utility, we're really pretty far along. We talked about meeting with the council, but I think now, talked to City Manager Hanson, and I think we'd be better meeting with the utility committee because we've got some questions, especially in the stormwater utility area, on how do we make certain decisions and what kind of things do you want to look at? For instance, if you do an ERU type of method, which is that equivalent residential unit, we've got all kinds of numbers for you to look at. And then we're looking at the costs of all the stormwater type of things that could be charged throughout, and every city does this differently. So we'd kind of like to sit down and go through that. It's probably going to take maybe an hour or so. And we'll, we'll get with City Manager Hanson and try to have a meeting on the stormwater utility and well, and the water and sewer rate study. My indications early on is the water and rate study looks pretty good. It looks like it's getting close and we're getting to where we should be able to give you some preliminary results next week. And that's all I had tonight.
Any questions for Leo?
Just, I wanted to remind Leo about what I mentioned earlier about the brick streets.
Gosh, thank you. I was going to address that. Thank you very much. That's based. Yes, so when we put that together and, and Councilwoman, I did kind of remember about the brick streets. I had not seen some of the, some of the actual resolutions that I've seen now, but I did remember. And on Spencer Street, we did look at an asphalt overlay. So we quickly today, when City Manager Hanson brought this up to us, we looked at it again and said, what could we do? You know, and if we just strictly took the, took the asphalt overlay out and like you had said during your, I mean, to, we're still looking at curb and gutter. And then on Spencer Street near the downtown, when we did that, we had a lot of really soft spots near that curb and gutter, meaning it was settling and that was causing a lot of our problems. So what we did there is we tore up that street. We put concrete patches in. We could put the, the brick back or put new brick that matches if you don't quite have enough. But we, we can make some design decisions during the design phase that I think would be really good and could really help out and make sure we keep that integrity the way you want it. Look at that, look at those resolutions. And I know there's cost things in there and give you some alternatives. Probably better do it done during the design because then you're going to know exactly what soft spots we need to take care of. Sometimes even I've seen streets in Davenport where we've, it was so bad, just like I talked to here near the curb, that the city said, okay, give us a, give us a two-foot concrete in front of the curb all the way up and then just do brick all, everywhere else. And it, it looked really good. So we can do things like that that would preserve you and meet your budgets. The asphalt overlay was an inexpensive way to do it. It would cost a little more to redo the brick, but not, not significant with all the other work that we're doing on Spencer. But we will definitely, when we get to the design on that, we'll definitely take a great look at it. I don't think it will put us out past our contingency. I think the costs that we have in there are still going to be okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else for Leo? Thank you, Leo.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's go down. We have interim City Manager Hanson. Anything you want to highlight in your report?
Yeah, actually, Councilmember Zacharias did send an email about the golf cart information and I did respond to that. That will be on the next meeting agenda for consideration. There's, it looks like over 500 in responses. That's a really good percentage of responses in your community. And Nick is tallying those results right now, so that'll be ready. Really, the budget has been kind of commandeering our time, especially for Lee and I. And that isn't going to change for the next week or so. I'm going to be putting together a presentation showing you last year's budget numbers compared, per department, compared with what we're proposing. And I'm going to bring you a budget that is balanced. I call it balanced, but the revenues will be slightly over the expenses. So hopefully you don't have to make any tough decisions. But again, any changes that will need to be made will be collected. Those changes will be collected on February 2nd. And we'll need to be signing the public hearing on the following meeting. So it's all in good time. Also, today, we just met with Public Safety Committee for three hours about. And that will continue in next meeting. We are going to ask for a work session before the council meeting to discuss those items of public safety. And there's about five or seven or so things that we'd like to talk to you about. So you may want to schedule probably four o'clock, I think, probably near, maybe four, right? I don't. And then.
Next council meeting?
Next council meeting, yep. And then for the council finance and ordinance committee, it's in the packet there. We'll be looking at a social media policy, the annual evaluation. I have a pay-for-performance matrix that we'll look over. And the fees for, and regulations for the niches. And now we just added the mission and vision statement. So that'll probably be a longer meeting than anticipated as well. So we'll get that information out to you, hopefully tomorrow. We collected all those policy drafts, so that's it for me.
Any questions for the manager Hanson? Hearing none. We will go on to Danny Goodell with the Water Department. Anything you want to highlight from your report?
Um, not really. Just the, the meeting with Mark was pretty exciting about GIS system. I know we've been working on that for years. And we finally got a GPS locator so we can kind of dial those in. Basically, we'll go out and shoot them. We'll send them back to him and he'll update everything for us. And so that's exciting. It's a, it's a move forward for the department. I want to thank Nick for helping us pick out a GPS locator and find a seller and taking care of the purchase and all that. But yeah, nothing else really I want to highlight.
Okay, I do appreciate the photos on, on certain things where it kind of really puts together of what you're talking about so we can actually see it. Because. of what you're talking about so we can actually see it, because, you know, some, now all of us are, you know, in the water service, so I do appreciate the photograph.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
No problem.
Any questions for, uh, Danny? Okay, thank you. And Craig, your issue with the wastewater treatment plan, any highlights you want to talk to the council, Craig?
Yeah, I've got a few. On the bio solids report, Ken Riley is going over the applicator sheets and basically tracking where they were applied. He will record all the number of wet tons and once we have that information, I will basically convert the numbers and we'll convert them over to dry metric tons. And I will pump the, uh, here on Friday to remove that reducer. But I noted that the North Street pump head went out the other day and they will take it back to their shop for repairs. Uh, we are currently waiting on Hometown Plumbing for a quote and I S is also going to be doing some of the electrical work to reinstall the, uh, air compressors. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Craig? Hearing none, thank you, Craig.
You're welcome.
We are on to the library director report, Ally, this is your time, anything you want to highlight from your report?
Um, yeah, at the time of the writing of this report, we had not reopened for our appointment services yet and we just did on Sunday. Um, those have been going well for the past, uh, three days and, um, I'm hoping that they continue to do so.
Okay. Any questions for Ally? Okay, thank you, Ally. Nick Keith is up next with the parks and recs, uh, slash communications report.
I don't have a whole lot to add except for just, uh, staff has been helping with city hall cleaning of the basement, sorting through papers and whatnot and hopefully we can have, uh, more room downstairs for the move and the renovation job, so.
Thank you, Nick.
Any, any questions for Nick?
Uh, I was curious if, um, do we need, at one point, I know we were looking at a, we received a camera that had three sixty view. I just didn't know if that was something we could look at, if we're going to continue these meetings online to look for cameras that have more of a panoramic view?
Uh, if I remember right, I believe that camera had been sold after being bought, it wasn't what they wanted to go with. Um, I think once you have a permanent location is when we would really dial in, uh, your system.
Yeah.
Right now, I mean, there are other things that we could do, but it all, it's always going to come down to the, to money.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, the, the library is looking at, um, upgrading the meeting room space, um, for this fiscal year.
For a temp, for a temporary fix, Nick, would a water, wider lens, uh, just to plug into the laptop like we're using right now? I think that's what they're talking about, it's, is basically you're getting, uh, myself and council member Zacharias and that's all that. I mean, is there wide, wide angle lenses out there just for the, uh, laptops or the?
Probably not what we would need, we would need something probably, or I would say mounted, uh, in the ceiling or the corner, corner of the room that would give you a better view. Uh, there might be a standalone, uh, camera that we could definitely look into that would link up to our network or to the, to the laptop that you were using, but, uh, just the standard webcams, but you're, that's what you're adding right now, so.
Okay. Don't know if you don't ask, thank you, Nick.
Yep.
Okay, nuisance report, is this, uh, chief Lyra's report?
Actually, tours, isn't it? It is a combination of, uh, chief Lyra and, um, Sherry Hopper, deputy city clerk and, um, also Terry Gert. So all three of them worked together on, um, the nuisance, depending on the types of nuisance, um, so. Um, Lyra's on, if you have any questions on anything, but, um, this is where we're at. And to be honest with you, I think this list looks pretty decent compared to the last couple of years. You know, we've had some full-page nuisance situations, so I, I think that staff has really good job staying on top and following through and the community is, you know, again, creating that education and just, you know, the communication being is educate the community first and then, you know, putting these steps in place. And so that's been helpful to have, um, community members are cleaning up the nuisances in the timeframe that they need to. So these are the cases that go beyond that.
Okay, and I think most of them had second notices posted.
Yep.
Okay.
If I may add, um, uh, there'll probably be a, uh, two or three more added to this list on first note, these would be first notices coming out tomorrow uh, for them, um, so, uh, this is going to be an ongoing situation with nuisances, as you all know, this is a constant thing. Uh, the more we stay on it, the less nuisances we have, so, uh, just to let you know that we're on it and we're as the continuous thing for the police department to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
About the nuisances? Okay.
I think we could add the nuisance abatement report, maybe with Dave's report next, next time too, and then we'll just have it on track for monthly and just have it included in the report, that's okay.
Yep, that'd be great.
I, I noticed that the Dodge Ram is in service now, Dave.
Yes, it is.
So.
We're all happy about it.
Council members, any committee meetings or any other types of meetings, uh, that the rest of the council needs to be aware of? Okay, just to let you know, I will be attending the county assessor's annual meeting next week. If you have anything that you want me to relay to the county assessor, I will be down there next week. And we are down to the adjournment part of the meeting. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Oh, you don't, you don't need to take formal action, just.
Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are adjourned.